Welcome to another special edition of Iron Paulsboro. As we continue to dedicate time to try and bring you good information related to the train derailment, which is being called the Jefferson Street Train Derailment in Paulsboro. After the first attempt at a town forum that was held, going to be held in the Hanci School last week, breakdown of microphone, didn't come off as well as people would have liked it to have come off. Mayor Hamilton and members of the governing body insisted that there be another opportunity for people to come and hear a presentation by the Unified Command. That happened last night, that was on December 11th, we're taping this opening on December 12th, was held at the Paulsboro High School Auditorium, the public was welcomed at 6:00. In excess of 350 residences and business owners showed up to hear a presentation by the Unified Command, we're going to bring that to you now. Following that presentation was a long series of questions and answers, that won't be part of this evening's presentation, what we're showing you is what you would have seen had you come to that meeting that was held at the high school. So, and by the way, I should add in advance, they had to turn the auditorium lights down for the visual presentation, so if the lighting looks a little bit dark in spots, it's just the way it felt. Before we start this program, special thank you to John Mondelli and his team over at the Gloucester County Institute of Technology and their Broadcast and Video Production Division, and to Fred Booker, of course, who's been the workhorse through all this, and the crew that John brought over set this up, so you could see this presentation as it happened. Enjoy it, we hope you find it informative, and stay tuned.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Tom Rottinger, I'm president of the Paulsboro Board of Education. Through all that we've been through these last week or in few days, we're glad to have this here tonight, so you all can come in and hear what's going on, and have questions and have answers. So, to get it going, I would like to introduce Mayor Jeffrey Hamilton, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rottinger, good evening, everyone, and at this moment, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Paulsboro Auditorium. I would like to take this time and thank all the responders who came to little old Paulsboro to help out in this disaster which has taken place on November 30th. The response teams came from all around the county, from the state, and even across country to help with the residents here in Paulsboro to make sure we get back on the right track. This meeting is being videotaped, just to let you know, this will be posted on the Paulsboro website within a couple of days. What I'd like to do now is to introduce Pastor Kevin Davis to give us a word of prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Friends, tonight as we gather, I have been at the Community Assistance Center since the incident occurred, mostly every day, and have watched what has taken place, and I've seen the care and the compassion, and I wanted to share that in my word tonight of blessing and invocation, as we ask that spirit and that presence to be with us tonight to guide and direct everything that we do, and everything that has been done. Would you join me in an attitude of prayer? Gracious Creator, Sustainer, God, tonight we come and we give you thanks. We give you thanks that amidst the chaos, the upheaval, and the confusion that we here have experienced in these past days, that you have provided the responders, you have provided the help, you have provided encouragement, sustenance, support, physical, emotional, and spiritual. And for that, Lord, we need to be thankful tonight. I give you thanks, Lord, for everyone who responded to the call to gather here in this town, to respond to an incident. We thank you, Lord, for the expertise that has been surrounding us in these past days. We thank you for the care and the compassion for our residents. We thank you, Lord, for everyone that you have raised up, for all those involved. But, Lord, we thank you that as bad as this has been, we praise you that there was no loss of life, and for that, Lord, we need to be truly grateful and thankful. So, Lord, tonight we come and we ask your blessing upon the continued efforts, both on the operations end and the humanitarian side. We continue to ask your blessing upon all those who are involved, even right now. Lord, we ask your blessing tonight on all those who will be presenting, give them the clarity of mind and speech that they need to communicate everything that they need to, in a way that we can understand, Lord, and we will thank you for that. But, Lord, we ask you tonight for gifts. Tonight, Lord, we ask you for the gift of understanding and the gift of hearing. We ask you, Lord, for the gift of presence. Continue, Lord, to bless all of us as you have in these days. Continue to bless the workers, continue to bless all the support staff, everyone else that continues to make sure that we are where we need to be. And for these gifts, Lord, we will give you thanks and praise. In God's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Kevin Davis. Now, I would like to introduce the Unified Command panelists. Just to let everyone know, the panelists will provide a brief overall update on the incident that happened on November 30th. First one would be Paulsboro Fire Chief Alfonso Gennapoli. His overview will be on the accident and the initial emergency response. United States Coast Guard Captain Kathy Moore, Operations and Cleanup. New Jersey Department of Education Protection, a Region Chief Bureau Emergency Response, Southern Office Jim Manuel. Environmental Monitoring, Conrel, Community Assistance, Representative Rob Fender, Community Assistance. New Jersey Department of Health, Joe Elridge, for Public Health. Before we get started in this meeting, we have a couple of rules that we'd like you to abide by, and we're going to start off first with, please, after the panelists complete their presentation, you will begin to moderate questions and answer session. We're going to give you that opportunity, please don't call out, or we would like you to leave, because other people in this here auditorium, I'm sorry, in the auditorium would like to hear what's going on, so please, no interruptions. Each member of the audience will have an opportunity to ask at least one question that is most important to them. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand, and you will be escorted to the microphones as we have out front here. All questions may not be answered at this time, but we will post them with the card you have in your hand, all you have to do is give it to the people at the end, the exits, and they will make sure they get on the website if your question did not get answered. In order to give everyone an opportunity to ask questions, please, we limit you to two minutes. Please do not use this opportunity to make statements or tell stories, what you think might have happened, or what you've heard, that's what the panel is here for tonight, to give you direct information. Please, we ask that you give Paulsboro residents a chance to ask the questions first, because they were the ones that were in this incident that happened in the borough, so please give us that courtesy, and let them have the opportunity to ask the questions. Please be courteous to our panel right here. After you complete your questions, please do not, once again, do not interrupt the response. Please be patient, as subsequent questions may be a question also on your list. If you have unanswered questions, once again, please fill out the card that you receive, and they will answer the question on our webpage. Please be aware that if all questions not answered, and not able to be answered at this time due to ongoing investigations, everyone will be made to get answers, everyone will have an effort to get answers to this opportunity that we have right now at here in the auditorium of Paulsboro. You can ask the most frequent questions on the website, which we will add to FAQ, known as Frequently Asked Questions. And when you do come up to the mic, please remember this, state your name, your address when you're coming up. And once again, welcome to Paulsboro Auditorium for this Paulsboro Train Car Accident. The first one we will have at this moment will be presenting Paulsboro Fire Chief Alfonso Gennapoli, Overview of the Accident and the Initial Emergency Response. Chief.
I think they're trying to screw with me, they gave an Italian full hand, I can't talk with my hand. The morning of November 30th, this is what I showed up to at about 7:05 in the morning. This was outside the scene there, it's vinyl chloride, it's a cloud, it's heavier than air, so consequently it rolls down to the ground. It, that morning, it was 32 degrees, the winds were calm, the humidity was high, which kept us down on the ground. Some of the things that we did that morning when I first got there, my assistant chief was already trying to ascertain the placard number on the car. Trying to get that with binoculars, the way the cars were positioned in the creek was difficult. We needed that to be able to respond to contact, the communications center, to find out what we had and what we're supposed to do. We finally got the number, we got to the county, we gave it to them, that's when we realized that that wasn't fog, that was actually the product that came out. Originally at the onset, we thought it was fog, what we normally get that comes off the creek, comes out that it was product. And the information that they gave us is, it's an inhalation hazard, you shouldn't breathe it, if you breathe it, it could cause dizziness, drowsiness, even make you unconscious. These are the information that we're getting from the communications. It's also highly flammable, so at that point, the decision was made that we were going to shelter in place. That's what we sent out to the residents with the reverse 911 and our early warning system. And I understand that the reverse 911, not everybody got it, we're working towards a solution to that. Again, this was further downtown that morning. That's some of the staffing that I had around me, giving me the information that I needed to be able to give the information to the public and make the decisions that I needed to make as the on-scene incident commander that morning. That's part of the response that we got. After I made the notification that we were going to shelter in place, I started getting people from Coast Guard, our Valero, or the old, our PBF refinery, I contacted their people, they came out, Pat Robinson, the fire chief down there, and his staff came out to help us, and our hazmat team, our county sea burn team, they came. We started getting all the resources that we need to try to develop a plan on how we were going to do this. And again, with the winds being calm that morning, it wasn't dispersing this stuff as quickly as possible. Also, the sun was being blocked by high clouds that morning, and that's all the weather forecast that came out that morning. At that point, we had our command center set up at the church, St. James Church there, and the experts came in, the Coast Guard and so forth, and told us that we needed to relocate because we were too close to the scene to be able to make good decisions. So, from that point, we went to Borough Hall and started meeting, the DEP had gotten there by then, Bob Van Fossen and his crew had gotten there, so we started getting some better information on it. And Captain Moore and her people got there. Gary was speaking with the different people from Conrel, because they were there on site, and we started getting a better handle on what we had out in the community. But it was important to understand that the reason we sheltered in place that day is we didn't want people going out because it sat low to the ground, we didn't want them going out breathing it, possibly getting drowsy or dizzy, and then getting in their car and starting their car, which was an ignition source. That was the last thing we wanted to do, that would just have been a public safety nightmare. God forbid somebody went out there, started a car, and it lit this stuff off. With the way it was dispersed through the town, we would have had multiple fires, I'm sure. So that was part of the decision-making that morning, and so we got to the Unified Command, and we started going through the things that we needed to do to try to mitigate this situation. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Captain Moore, and she can go in to more where we are with operations.
Thank you, my friend. Just a side note on Unified Command, when you spend 12 days with somebody, you get to know. A lot of you have seen this image in various forms over and over again. The hashed area in yellow indicates those people that are still out of their homes, and just north of that, I believe, is a business. It's going to sound a little bit cheesy maybe, but I got to tell you something I did shortly after the public meeting that next morning. We pulled off some of the photos from the public meeting, and we put pictures of the chief's grandchild up, and we titled them Faces of Paulsboro, and we put them all over the command post, because we work for you. Bottom line, whether you're a business here, you have kids here, you live here, we're working for you. And I wanted everybody in the command post that really has come from all over the country to work this issue, to never forget that we're working for you. So you've seen the image, I want to tell you a little bit about where we are. I'm happy to say that Phase Two Site Preparation is completed. So, all of this structure, these dolphins, the catwalk, the fender, all of this stuff is out of the way, the barge, the crane barge is up close to the bridge now. We pulled out the pilings from 1840, turns out they were a lot tougher than we thought. You remember this image, that's the breached car hung up in the A-frame. We had to secure all of the cars in order to be able to deal with the A-frame. Yesterday, during a meeting, I will tell you, I didn't have everybody's undivided attention, the A-frame went off and we watched it live on the video, I missed it because I was trying to run a meeting. And then we got the car. Today, this breached rail car is no longer on the bridge, now it's off the bridge, it's on a barge, it's safe in a way. You remember this image? I really couldn't, a week ago, tell you all how hard this was to deal with the breach in the rail car, but I have this image to try to explain to you how hard it was. In order to get thousands of gallons of product out of that car, we had to get into that hole, that hole, you can't really tell, is about three and a half feet by about one foot, and somebody really had to stick their head and their arms in there to work the big hose around all the bolster part of that other car that's in that hole. So that's why it took so long to get the product out. You all familiar that we ended up not being able to reach it all, so we had to backflush it with acetone and then pull that out. Turned out to be a great, safe way to do it, but it took a while, and I understand it impacted everybody in this community. Coming up next, here's what we have, Phase Three, we're in Phase Three, we're in car removal, we've already got one, but the next set of operations involves diving, and it involves our crane. And every day in the command post, we get this image, now this is from two days ago, so it's not from today, but I will tell you that this window right here, that is our slackwater dive window. We have a tremendous amount of work to do in that slackwater window. Our divers cannot dive in greater than one knot of current, and the creek, the creek, the creek goes from slackwater to screaming fast, and I hope the video works that we have. But I want you to look at the rest of this, we're keeping an eye on our daylight, so these periods, that's nighttime, this is daytime, this is nighttime. So you see two slackwater periods in nighttime, and then one slackwater period right now in daytime. I gave permission, we gave permission this afternoon to start diving at night. I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate the divers that are willing to take these risks. They're going to be diving at night. They're probably a little better off than the people on the boats that are tending them, because they already have supplied air, but I'm just telling you that this is a very dangerous operation, we're trying to beat back our constraints to be able to operate as much as possible. The next thing you're going to see is wind direction and speed. Our crane that we're using is an incredibly capable crane, however, it is not immune to constraints, so when the wind gets up to 15 to 20 miles an hour, we have to be very cautious, and we're not going to start a lift. And we have to stop crane ops entirely if we get winds over 20 miles an hour. What we're able to do though is tell you that frankly, for the rest of this week, we don't anticipate any winds that will stop our crane operations. The next thing we're worried about is lightning. Thunder's no problem, lightning, all work stops on the site. So, as we pray, let's pray for no lightning. So, what happens next? Sequence of events, Car One is done. Car Two is what we have lovingly named the Rocket Car, it is the most vertical, it is the most challenging logistically to grab, it is the most challenging logistically to dive on and rig. At this point, where we are today, we're going to try to dive on that rig and rig that car and lift that car before Friday. I don't know if we're going to get it, but we're going to try. If we get that car, Car Two, the Rocket Car, by Friday, a couple of things happen that really help us. Number one, if you see Car Three, there you go, Car Three, that is just derailed, it's not in the water, and it's not a whole lot for that to get seated back on the rails again. Then it's still connected to the gray car, Car Three, yeah, the gray car right there, so we can pull them out of the way and get them out of the site. So, everything we do, we're getting safer and safer and safer. The next pick is going to be Car Four. Car Four's the one that's most in the water, and if we can get the Rocket Car and the other two cars that are on the rails out of the way, Car Four is our last vinyl chloride car, and life gets really a lot more simple. We don't know if we're going to be able to get all those in that sequence, but if we do, then Car Four goes next, and then Car Five is the ethanol car that goes right after that. Car Five, very much likely, rather than be landing on a barge, will probably be landed on the rail. Depends on what condition the trucks are in, but that's a decision we'll make when we get a better look at it. So that's kind of the sequence of events. This is some of the tools we used. I've got ability to answer questions later, but I want to turn it over to Jim for environmental.
Okay, this is the, thank you. This is the science segment of the presentation, we'll have a pop quiz in a little while. I'm Jim Manuel, I'm with the Department of Environmental Protection Bureau of Emergency Response. We had folks that responded shortly after the initiation of the incident, they were down, they were down here in approximately an hour or so, so they very early began working on the incident. At a certain point, the Unified Command stood up, and we became part of that operation. As such, we had our science unit, our environmental support unit stood up, and it was a team that essentially consisted of New Jersey DEP, US Coast Guard, Gloucester County Department of Health, US EPA, contract environmental scientists, NOAA, the National Weather Service, many field personnel, data managers, IT experts, I think you get the drift, there was a lot of people involved in putting together this environmental monitoring plan, which is a multimedia plan, it captures air, water, soil, sediments in the creek. So what we did, if I can work this thing, you better do it. Okay. I'll start with an overview of the environmental program that we developed for air. The air monitoring was of primary importance because, as you know already, this is a volatilizing type of material, it likes to become a vapor. So this was the primary goal, was to start measuring what we had in the air at any given time, and continue monitoring throughout the incident. To do that, we used several different types of equipment and technologies. You can see here, the multi-ray, the area ray, those are what we call photoionization instruments. I don't want to get too technical, but what they do is they direct read volatile organics in the air. They have a small pump inside, and they constantly give out a reading in real time. The next is the gas colorometric tube, that's essentially a small chemistry set in a tube. They're chemical specific, so that, the tubes that we used would measure vinyl chloride directly. And again, it gives you almost immediate reading, within a few seconds to a couple of minutes, and it'll give you an indication on the tube that turns color, there's lines that tell you how much you have in the air, and that's the way you take the reading with those instruments. The reason we use a multitude of instruments, the reason we use a multitude of instruments is, we never like to rely on one instrument alone or one technology alone, because we cover all the gaps that way. Could you flip it, Karen? This is another segment of our monitoring, you can see a couple of examples sitting here on this table, all the way to the right, that's called a mini-can, there's a larger version of that that was also used. What they are, vacuum canisters, they suck in air over a period of time, and they're sent off to a laboratory. They're used very sophisticated and sensitive equipment to determine the concentration of vinyl chloride in that sample that's taken in those units. So we have very accurate readings over a period of time with those, which is also very important when you do analysis after the fact. The other thing there on the left-hand side, and you've probably seen it driving around town, is the EPA's Taga bus. It's essentially a mobile laboratory for doing air sampling, it's got sophisticated equipment called a GC mass spec in it, it continuously samples and it gives out a live real-time reading specific to vinyl chloride, which again was very important. That bus was directed to areas based on a lot of our other sampling techniques. There were a variety of ways that we deployed these instruments, and I think, go to the next slide. We had some fixed air monitoring stations where we had canisters, and we had another instrument, which I don't have here, it's called an area ray, works very similar to these other direct reading instruments, we posted those in areas, and we were able to receive a live feed back in the command post on a computer screen of what the readings were at those locations. So that was very important, that we could monitor 24 hours a day in real time what the air readings were throughout this array of equipment that was set up. The, go to the next slide. You can see all the green dots on that, those are all the locations that were air monitored and logged during the event, and you can see what kind of area that covers. The green doesn't really mean anything, it doesn't mean it was a good sample, a bad sample, it simply denotes location. But all of this information, as it was fed in and catalogued, was provided to the Unified Command in order to make decisions all throughout this incident and continues as we speak. Okay. This here, we developed many graphs, we have a lot of people that do data and IT, and I thought this one best depicted what I wanted to show here. You can see, along the bottom, you have dates, and up the side, you have concentrations. But the basic takeaway from this is a timeline, where you can see the graph going up in a peak, the dotted line represents, as you can see in the box, December 6th, that vinyl chloride car had been emptied and cleaned by that time. And you can see the results essentially drop off to zero, and they've remained that way, which is why everybody, other than the evacuated area that still exists, are back in their homes. The little peaks that you see... The little peaks that you see, the first one and then the second one, that was why the evacuation and the sheltering place was changed. I believe that was Monday, the 3rd of December. And that was why we changed the thinking on how the sheltering in place was being done and eventually the evacuations. That leads us to the evacuation. There was, the area was zoned out in three, essentially three zones, and then the evacuated zone. An additional zone was added up on top that's labeled Zone 2. That's basically for our management. And it was also for the repopulation, to try to phase people back in in an orderly way so there wasn't mass confusion trying to get people back in their homes. We really tried to monitor the data as closely as we could and try to get people back in as soon as we can, but at the same time remaining safe and keeping everybody out of harm's way. The yellow dots in this slide depict homes and businesses that were monitored during the reentry process, when people were escorted back to their homes. Once the, once the levels that we had that you saw in that previous graph dropped down to the zero level and stayed there for an appropriate period of time, that's when we kicked off the repopulation of those evacuated areas. As you can see here, there's some statistics. We had 326 total homes that were addressed, 281 tested, 45 declined to be tested, 23 businesses, 56 homes tested outside of the evacuation zone at people's request. There's approximately 20 that are scheduled at this time. Eight of 11 homes remain evacuated. And I think the people that are involved in that understand why. During the process of repopulation, the total number of vinyl chloride detections was zero as they went in the houses and checked them, which it's what we expected, but we were very happy to see that, obviously. Okay, this leads us to our next section. We also requested through Unified Command, the environmental unit conduct sampling of the water in Mantua Creek. That ended up also including the Delaware River. The slide shows the surface water sampling locations. I believe you can see them. The colored area just indicates the area that we were working in doing the monitoring. And this consisted of actually going out into the creek and into the river and taking physical samples and having them analyzed. It was done in three phases. The first round was collected shortly after the incident to determine a baseline of what did we have in the water in the river. Until that time, we really didn't know. So we collected samples, had them tested. The second round was collected after that breached car was emptied and purged. So we could tell, okay, did that make a difference? And it did. The third round is planned after the cars are all removed. There's nothing else left there. There's going to be a third round of water sampling, very similar to these previous ones that took place. So we've completed two of the three rounds of samples. A few of the samples initially had elevated concentrations, but we were actually pleased to see that none of those samples actually exceeded the EPA ecological screening values that are posted. The concentrations in the second round of samples have decreased between an order of magnitude roughly, essentially going from hundreds to tens, let's say. So we're very pleased that what we expected to happen did happen and the results were shown that everything was dropping as the product degrades and evaporates. The Delaware River Basin Commission and the New Jersey American Water Company also did sampling in the Delaware River. So they covered the river upstream and downstream of the Mantua Creek. As you can see also, the samples in the Mantua Creek were done both upstream and downstream of the incident itself due to the tidal flow in and out. We also did a well search with the assistance of the locals and the state folks that do private water wells, public wells. And we found no private potable wells in the vicinity. The Paulsboro Public Supply Wells are located more than a half mile from the incident scene itself. We don't really expect any impact due to the depth of those wells. I'm talking about the public supply wells. And they're screened for vinyl chloride anyway. All water companies are required to test their public water supply. Okay, this graph here shows the creek sediments themselves. The tidal zone, when you have low tide and you have mud flats and land that's exposed when the tide drops off, are what we term the sediments, between the dry land and the tideline. That's what we call the inner tidal zone. We wanted to capture those sediments because, again, that's part of the environment. There's a lot of macroinverters and things that live in that. So again, it was part of the testing program. You can see there the locations of those samples in relation to the incident, which is the big purple dot in the middle there. There were 17 samples collected. Three actually revealed a concentration exceeding an ecological screening value. However, we think that that's probably going to drop off. It's what we anticipate anyway. So there's going to be, just like with the water sampling, there's going to be another round of sediment sampling. And we expect that that'll show that those levels have dropped off in the areas where we had higher concentrations. When the wreck is all gone and the cars are all out of there, what they intend to do is they're going to include the scene itself, where all those cars rested on the bottom of the creek. The creek bottom itself will actually be sampled. So that'll become part of that sediment sampling. Next slide. Okay, we also included soil. This is the dry land type soil, up and away from the creek. And that was a plan that was set up to do surface soils to see if there was any deposition of material on the land. We didn't really expect any because, as we've said, vinyl chloride likes to be a vapor so it doesn't stick around and linger on the surface. So this is the plan. You can see all the locations of where it was sampled adjacent to the wreck. And then up in the part of town, you can see it's sort of a cone-shaped array coming from the incident site, where we expected we might find, were highly likely to find deposition if it did occur. The surface samples were collected from the public right-of-ways. Really didn't do private property in this sampling. And it was all between the curb and the sidewalk for the most part. The results that we got from those were all well below the residential soil cleanup criteria that's developed by the DEP. So we were pretty pleased with that. And again, it's what we expected. Is that the last one? Okay, thank you very much. I hope that explains what our sampling plan was all about. It was kind of brief. Tried to keep it as low technical as I could without confusing anybody.
Thank you. For those of you that have not met me yet, my name is Rob Fender. I'm with the Conrail Community Assistance Center. And I've seen a lot of you, recognized a lot of you in the crowd and, thank you. And I hope to see more of you. Want to give you kind of a, first of all, I want to thank the mayor for setting this up. But more importantly, I want to thank you. It's been a tough 10 days for you, I know. And we're still going through some things. I appreciate your patience. And if you haven't come to see us, to see us for assistance, we're still down at the fire station for now. We're going to go over that in a little bit. But we certainly do appreciate your patience. I also want to thank the first responders. They've done a tremendous job. The Coast Guard, please, feel free. The Coast Guard as well as the Red Cross. The Red Cross has started with us down at the community center and did a phenomenal job. Okay, let's talk about where we've been and then we'll talk about where we're going to go. Okay, we're still at the fire department. And we still have Monday through Friday hours, 10 to 8. We just adjusted those a little bit due to basically volume flow. Weekends, we're going to be open to 9 to 1. Take a look at those phone numbers, please. They're very important and they're still active. The community hotline, the mental health hotline, which was just set up and I thought was a great idea, and the health hotline, which is manned by folks from CTEH. All of those phone numbers, if you call those, you can get some valuable information. I certainly encourage you to do that. Now what's going to happen? Well, the one takeaway, the one message I want to get through to you today is that we're not going anywhere. I mean, we've taken a lot of, we've taken care of a lot of folks. We paid a lot of expenses. We've seen a lot of people. And here's a kind of a stat. We've seen 1,000, we've made 1,000 face-to-face contacts. We put 1,100 people, or not 1,100 people, we paid for 1,160 hotel rooms. We've supplied people with food. We've supplied people with lodging. We've taken care of pets. I've taken care of laundry. I've taken care of some prescriptions. We've done just about everything I think we could do, certainly the problems that were brought to us to take care of. We've got that 100 number that I previously had up on the screen. We've fielded a number of calls to them. They're taking any number of different kinds of questions and they're funneling those questions to us for response. So we've done a lot, but here's again the takeaway. We're not going anywhere. We're going to move. We're going to move to a more permanent facility. We're going to continue to listen. If you bring up concerns to us, we're going to try and address them. We're at least going to discuss them. And we want to be your partner here. I know, you know, this is tough. And I know, you know, we're Conrail, but you know what? We can work together. We can come up with a solution. And you just need to come and see us. I want to, what I want to do is back up to the slide with the new address. And I think it's on the back of your agenda, at least it was on the back of mine. We just secured this property today. It's 541A Mantua Drive. I guess that's how I pronounce that and I apologize for butchering that. Okay, I'm sorry. But it's a good location. It's right next to the wrestling building, for those of you that may not know exactly where it is. Close proximity, I hope. And we'll be moving to that location over the weekend and be open at that location on Monday. And I'll look forward to some further questions.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Joe Elders. I'm the Director for Consumer Environmental Health within the State Department of Health. So I'll try to be brief because I know there are a lot of questions that all of you would like to ask. I don't need that thing. So I wanted to really provide an update on a couple of things that we've been doing since the beginning of this event. Part of the responsibilities within my department, within my service area, is to ensure that whenever there is any type of suspect or known contamination within schools and childcare centers, that we ensure that before anybody reoccupies those facilities, that they're safe to occupy. So with that, we deployed staff over the weekend to conduct 24-hour sampling in the two childcare centers in the town, the One Wick Center and the four schools. We set out about 30 canisters that kind of look like that right there and set them out on Saturday and picked them up on Sunday. All the levels came back fine. It's fine to re-enter the schools, which are open today. The childcare centers have been reopened. We're quite confident that anything that was there is no longer there. So that's the first thing. The second thing, and probably more important or just as important, is we have a team from CDC. When this first occurred, they reached out to us about providing some type of assistance. Whenever there's a large-scale event like this in a town where, you know, a lot of residents have been impacted, they have a team that comes out and assists state and local governments in providing assistance and determining what happened, what symptoms you're feeling, how best to direct you to medical services and for follow-up. And obviously to answer all the questions that you may have. So that team is on its way up here actually and will be meeting first thing tomorrow in Trenton. Probably this weekend, they will be deployed. My staff will also be deployed with them to start to administer a survey on all the health, potential health impacts you may have felt, your symptoms. It's a quite extensive survey. It may take some time to administer, but for us to help you, we need as much cooperation as possible. They will be up here for as long as they have to be to get the job done. We're not just looking at people in the evacuation zone. We're going outside the evacuation zone. And we're going to try to include as many of you as we can that we think had, that were impacted by this. I can tell you that from what we normally do in the work in my department when we deal with issues like this, we will be here until we don't have to be anymore, however long that is. My commissioner's, her first responsibility that I have to have for her is the health of all of you. So we have to be accountable to you and you should hold us accountable. We will provide the necessary guidance and we will make sure that before we go anywhere, that we have looked at every possible scenario. We've dotted every I, crossed every T. And that's the only thing that we can do to try to help get you through this point and also answer a lot of the questions about potential effects that you were feeling or will feel. And I think that's about it. And I'm sure there's a lot of questions that you would like to answer.
I'd like to take this time to thank everyone for listening. And tonight, you were educated on the response and the procedures of this cleanup of vinyl chloride. This was not an easy task in cleaning up this material. My concerns and their concerns were the safety of Paulsboro.
To all the residents that made it out, I thank you for being so involved and for raising your voice. This issue, though, hopefully is going to be concluded in a couple of days from this taping, which I mentioned is on December 12th. But this issue is going to be talked about for a long time. And the governing body, the Borough of Paulsboro, as well as those of us who are engaged, are going to insist that resources remain. A conduit for questions that have to be answered stays open. And that every question, every Paulsboro resident has, every business owner has, will be thoroughly answered over time. And people will be made whole where they have been terribly inconvenienced and interrupted. So stay tuned. Keep an eye in the media for updated information, updated programs. Thank you for watching. And thank you to Fred Booker and John Mondelli and John Mondelli's crew. And for Emma Stevenson, who is not standing with me at the moment. For her, I say, see you on Broad Street.